One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kathy, would you say prayer, please?
Father, we are gathered here today to do the business of the county. We ask for your blessings. We thank you for all the blessings you've already bestowed on each and every one of us, guidance and direction in a way that would be pleasing to you. We ask all of this in my head, my precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Sam.
All right. We will.
Take a motion to approve the amendments of September the 24th.
Motion's been made. We have a second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of accepting amended certificate from the Budget Commission.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to the Budget Commission amended certificate? Hearing none?
I will make a motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds.
Are there any questions in regards to the fund appropriations? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution authorizing the Economic Development Director to apply for and execute an application for the Targeted Opportunity Grant.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item four? Rob, would you mind, uh, this morning, before we vote on this, would you come and speak to the, the audience on, uh, the significance of the CDBG grant that you're applying for?
Yeah.
Would you do that, please? I know we talked about it, but I, I, um, just so that everybody knows what exactly the significance of this is.
All right, on, uh, on applying for this grant money.
Yes.
What we did, um, we, we came across another county that had done this, Carroll County. And, uh.
Now, we're on one. This is in regards to the children's museum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we're talking CDBG at this point.
Yeah, yeah, I got a couple of them out there, guys.
Sorry about that. We'll get to that one here a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, um, a couple of gentlemen in town, uh, they bought the building there on Mark, on the corner of Market and, uh, Second Street in the Boney Fiddle area. And, uh, they're putting together a project and they've involved the children's museum who have committed to taking this building once it's completed and the renovations of it. And we're going to try to turn this into a children's museum. And with that being said, it, it's one of the old, old buildings in town, uh, historic building in that district and, uh, does not have an elevator. So, um, we needed to, to be assured that all the handicapped and people with disabilities could access the entire museum. So we've applied for a CDBG TOPPS grant. And that is being done as, as we speak. And I need this resolution to move this forward, okaying me to do that. So I came to the commissioners and asked for this request and it's being granted and I can't thank you enough. And I'm sure the individuals and the children's museum involved in the project are also very grateful for, for y'all permitting us to do this. It's $200,000 grant that's going to apply to installing the elevator. Yeah, looks good.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, this is just another example where our economic development entity, Souda County Economic Development is reaching out and helping here, in this case, in the city, um, in the historic district.
Yeah.
Uh, trying to, to get that moving. And I know that they've been trying for a while on several fronts to get this thing going, but this is critical.
Yes.
In order to make it happen. So, uh.
Very important.
Uh, just, um, I knew you'd talk to each. I'm sorry.
Well, they didn't say, but I don't think they would mind. It's, it's, uh, Mike Rays, Michael Rays and Stan, it was Stan Jennings, but it's, it's Michael Rays. He's, he's behind it. Mm-hmm.
They've been talking about this for a while now and, and these are just the kind of things that they have to get done in order to really make it successful. And I know that they're really dedicated to it. Robert has come to us individually and talked to us about this. And, and, uh, this is the culmination of those efforts of the economic development. Uh, I think it's a great thing. I, I really do. I, I think a children's museum down in that area would be wonderful. Uh, it's going to draw people to that area. I don't know how you guys feel, but I mean, it's, it's, uh, definitely a, a plus for our area and, uh, for our children. And we do, we need activities for our kids. And this is going to be one that's going to be for our kids and their families.
And it's, it's a big part. I mean, it's, it's what we're here for, you know, it, it, it's, it's a huge part of, 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 uh, moving development forward for Souda County and the city.
Teamwork, Tweene County, the city.
Teamwork, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And it takes us all. Sir? That's exactly right.
Well, they're actually calling it the Candyland Children's Museum.
Oh, that's.
That's it.
Yeah, so it's, it's got a lot of historical reference there and, uh, kudos to the ones that are working really hard to make that happen. I know they have a board. Uh, they're, they're a nonprofit, if I remember right. I mean, they're, they're doing a lot of things right to get this done. So, uh, it's an exciting thing for our, our town. All of the kids in the area will be able to go there and learn. It's a learning experience. It's, it's definitely, it's going to be great, so.
Yeah, it'll even be regional. They've even reached out to outside counties.
I believe that, yeah. They'll, they'll garner a lot of, it'll, it'll be a nice addition to tourism. There'd be one more thing that families can do while they're in our area. Well, there's no more discussion on that. I don't know if there is, if there's not.
You're welcome.
I will, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of change order request for the 2020 Giant Oaks Mill Road elevation adjustment regarding the Souda County engineer.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to the, uh, change order request from our county engineer on this, uh, the Giant Oaks Mill Road elevation project? Hearing none?
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree. Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution accepting grant and dedication of right of way for public road purposes to be known as Giant Oaks Mill Road, Porter Township, Souda County, Ohio.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to the dedication of the right of way of the Giant Oaks Mill Road project, road itself, item six? Hearing none?
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and the then announced certificates in a total amount of $684,051.12.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none?
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree. Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution establishing the CARES Act COVID-19 Small Business Grant Program regarding the Souda County Economic Development.
If it's okay with, uh, Mrs. Coleman and Mr. Crabtree, um, can we, can we hold off on this until the end? We'll, we'll skip this one and do item nine first and then we'll revisit this one because this one, uh, there's quite a bit of conversation in regards to this one. Could we do that? Would that be okay with you all? Okay, so, uh, could you go to item nine, please, and then we'll come back to item eight?
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item nine? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye. Thank you. On item eight, uh, the reason I asked for that to be moved to the end is this is a, uh, something new for Souda County. Uh, it's a great, wonderful, positive step forward, I believe, uh, that it can be. And I really wanted to, uh, to bring this out, uh, to discuss the resolution that's being considered today. The resolution itself and, and I, I won't read it in its entirety at this time. The press, um, you, you, of course, can, I'll tell you what, I will read it. It's not that super long, but, um, quickly, this is something that, that the commissioners have individually been discussing and working with Robert on. This is, uh, something that's being done. A couple of other counties in the state has been working on this. And the Village of New Boston has done this. The City of Portsmouth has done this. And, um, I, I'm very, I, I believe the Village of New Boston was right on this early. I mean, they, they, they move fast. And I know Robert's worked with, uh, the City of Portsmouth on this as well as, uh, Souda County. And, uh, this resolution is being considered today, um, is in regards to a CARES Act, um, allotment to support our local small business. The resolution has stated is, whereas in 2020, the United States began addressing problems and issues associated with the worldwide COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas in response to the economic fallout caused by the pandemic, the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, was passed by Congress, establishing a $150 billion coronavirus relief fund to provide payments to state, local, and tribal governments navigating the negative and devastating impacts of the pandemic. And whereas Section 601D of the Social Security Act is added by Section 5001 of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, authorizes a Board of County Commissioners to utilize CARES Act funding to assist local businesses affected by the pandemic with a small business grant program. And whereas a county with a population that exceeds 28,000, Souda County is a unit of local government eligible for receipt of direct payment under the CARES Act. And as such, is eligible, eligible to receive up to $887,262 from the coronavirus relief fund. And whereas Board of Commissioners want to develop a grant program to provide financial aid to small businesses that have sustained economic hardships as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the Board of Commissioners want to appropriate $250,000 of the CARES Act allotment for Souda County, Ohio to a grant program that will provide financial aid to small businesses that has sustained economic hardships as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic in the form of $10,000 grants for each qualifying business as long as the funds are available. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the Souda County CARES COVID-19 Small Business Grant Program is hereby established to provide Souda County small businesses with a grant to provide monetary relief from the business interrupt, interruption costs caused by the pandemic in the form of a $10,000 grant of CARES Act funding. Section 2, that $250,000 of the CARES Act allotment received by Souda County, Ohio shall be appropriated to the Souda County CARES COVID-19 Small Business Grant Program to be dispersed to qualifying small businesses in the form of a $10,000 grant per qualifying business. Section 3, that the Souda County CARES COVID-19 Small Business Grant Program shall be implemented and administered by the Director of the Office of Economic Development. Okay? That's how the resolution reads at this time. I, I personally, I think this would be a major win for our small businesses in our community. Uh, this allows us to do up to 25 $10,000 grants, which some people may say that's not a whole lot of money, but to a struggling small business, that is a huge amount of money to offset the losses that they've already absorbed as a result of this. We have several businesses that are literally hanging on by a thread right now. And this should help those businesses. Um, in, in talking with Robert and, and working with, trying to get this program set up, what we would do, uh, here, and we can get into some of the nuts and bolts of it here in a little bit, Sam, but, um, it would be very much a hands-on approach. I know that's not the right word to use in COVID, is it? But very much a, a personal, um, where they would come to Robert, they would fill out an application, they would go through that process, um, kind of like an interview process so much. And financials are involved, basically just like anybody applying for a grant. And, uh, they would go through that process. There is a committee, uh, that's part of this, made up of the Economic Development, um, Director, one Commissioner, and our, um, our County Auditor, David Green, would be part of that committee to, uh, determine who is qualified and who would get those grants. This is $250,000. Um, this is what we're able to do right now. The, the county has absorbed huge costs, especially with our Health Department and other departments, uh, where there was 800 some thousand dollars, as was mentioned. A lot of that has already been spent in CARES Act dollars to, to cover those costs. But, uh, as a Board of County Commissioners, um, speaking for myself, I, I, I believe that we, you know, helping our small business is very, uh, very important. I actually looked up some statistics, and if you'll bear with me for just a second, why this is so important to our area. Uh, small business comprises a share, a share of the US economy that's huge. Uh, there are 31.7 million small businesses in America. Uh, we have a lot of them right here in Souda County. Small businesses make up, listen to this, 99.7% of US employer firms. 99.7%. 64% of net new private sector jobs are in small businesses. 49.2% of private sector employment, 42.9% of private sector payroll, 46% of private sector output, 43% of high-tech employment is from small business. 98% of firms exporting goods are small businesses. And 33% of our total exporting value is from small business. So the, 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 the value of our small business, the importance of keeping our small business alive, especially in a rural community such as Portsmouth is, uh, in a city that our size, is critical to maintain employment and to maintain our, our, our way of life. And, uh, I, I don't know, uh, Ms. Crabtree or Ms. Coleman, I'm sorry, if you would have something you would like to add?
Well, first of all, I would like for Robert to give his, um, address, phone number, and when the applicants may, um, uh, start coming in to talk to you about the process.
Yeah, yeah, if they want to come in, um, we're at 502. If they want to come in, we're at 502 Court Street in the old Oddfellows Building. And my phone number is 740-357-9779.
So, um, after this is approved, um, if you didn't hear him, it's 502 Court Street. It's the Souda County Economic Development Office, uh, under the directorship of Robert Horton. Phone number 740-357-9779.
Mr. Crabtree?
Well, I think you covered everything, but I, I would say that, um, you know, any business and any money that flows through Souda County, uh, usually we reap the harvest on that about seven times over before it leaves the area. So, uh, small businesses and, and even larger businesses are very important in, in any county or area.
Good point.
And it, it's good to, that we're able to do this, so.
Good point.
I can, I can think right off the top of my head, five or six, that I know personally that this, this is bound to be a, um, a help to them. And, and like you said, may keep them from having to close their doors. You know, every $10,000 is a lot of money to a small business.
Yeah. Well, what, what is exciting, and, and, uh, Robert and I was talking the other day about this, is, um, if passed, between New Boston and the City of Portsmouth and now Souda County, those three entities will have pumped a half a million dollars into our local economy to help save our local businesses. That is unprecedented, I believe, Sam. Uh, you've been around here for a while. Few years, yeah. I don't know if you know of the time that, uh, this has ever actually been able to happen, that this much money's been able to. Yeah, so, I mean, and, and really, um, this, this could be a beginning. You know, there, there may be other monies made available in the future. And, you know, we're, we're going to play it by ear. We're going to see what the response is to this. And then we'll go from there. And, and I know that working together, I know Robert, uh, has been talking to the city manager, Portsmouth city manager, a lot. And, and there's going to be a lot of cooperation there as far as, um, s- talking back and forth to make sure we help as many businesses as possible. So, uh, with that, um, there's no further discussion. Uh, would someone like to make a motion on this?
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
A hearty yes. Aye. All right. Um, Robert, would you like to discuss this?
Uh, well, you, you pretty much.
Okay.
Dead on the head. Um, um, I'm just, I'm excited about it. I think it's very, very important, uh, what we're doing here for our businesses. I also, Kathy, know a few that can use the help in a big way.
I was going to ask you if you had heard personally.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, we, you know, Mark and I, we're out and about and we talk to people all the time. They can use the help. The small business grants that went out through the Small Business Association, um, were also good, but not everyone was, was, was able to, to, uh, to meet, to meet those, those criteria. And, um, banks are a little less lenient. They're a business, they have to run, you know, so, uh, sometimes their criteria is quite tight. And, and some smaller businesses have, you know, they, they, they just can't meet that. And I think this is going to be an opportunity, especially for our downtown businesses.
Yes.
Our small businesses out in our townships that just can't meet that.
Right.
Criteria. This is going to be their catalyst to try to keep their doors open. So it's huge. And also, like you said, the city has done the same thing, talking with Sam, city manager. They've put up $200,000 themselves and they've left that door open as we go through this. It's, it's a, it's a tight time period, so.
Yes.
If you're going to apply, you, you really need, it's first come, first served, so you need to come knock on that door fast. Give me a call ASAP. Same with the city. And, um, theirs is open also for hopefully future funding as we go through this pandemic.
Great. Now, on the criteria for eligibility, I'm sure that that's going to be a question that a lot of people are going to ask. There's six specific items of eligibility that way. And I'm going to read these because I want everybody to know that this just isn't a, a willy-nilly thing. I mean, we're, there's, there's some that are eligible, there's some not. Business must demonstrate a negative impact from the state mandated closures and/or restrictions. Revenue must have declined by 10% or more as a result of COVID-19 since March 15th, 2020. Business must be located in Souda County. Now that includes the city. Of course, the city of Portsmouth is part of Souda County. And it must have been in operation prior to February the 15th, 2020. Business must have two or more, but fewer than 25 full-time equivalent employees as of March 15th. Annual gross receipts less than 2 million. Ineligible businesses include tobacco, vaping, tattoo parlors, sexually oriented and primary, and primary alcohol sales such as carryout or convenience stores. Nonprofits and places of worship are also ineligible. Businesses must be in good standing with local, state, and federal jurisdictions with respect to taxes. That's important as well. If you are not caught up on your taxes, your taxes are not current, you are ineligible for this program. Okay?
That is correct.
All right? So.
Is there a deadline of when I want to apply?
There is, there's 30-day, 30-day. I believe it's October 31st, I believe, is the date. And that'll give everybody 30 days. Now, as Robert said, though, it's first come, first served. And we will be reviewing these applications as they come in because we really feel like that's needed so that we can get help to whoever needs it as soon as possible. So that'll be reviewed quickly. And really, the response will dictate future allotments, meaning, um, right now, we're starting with $250,000. There is the opportunity, as Portsmouth has, has said also, to expand. Uh, that is something that we would have to come together again as a board to decide on. But, uh, we will, we will definitely, uh, I've already, I've talked with the Auditor's Office this morning about that very, very possibility. And, uh, they would want to get together again, go over what we have left in COVID money, COVID Act money, to see if that is a possibility.
There's an old adage that every dollar spent, a community will turn over several times, let's say, six, seven, eight times.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And that could be a really economic boon for the area.
It can, yeah. I mean, we're, we're looking forward to do that. And with COVID-19 continuing to lag on, and I think we would all agree that that is happening, the economic impact continues. Even though, you know, I was very pleased personally to see the restaurants, you know, open back up. Of course, with safety restrictions, uh, that will help a lot of these restaurants, big time, especially, you know, I know, you know, buffets, things like that, they, but they have restrictions, you know, there's a lot of safety involved with it. But it'll help, but replacing what's already been lost is, is, uh, they'll, without help, they'll never do that. That, that just is not something that you can easily do. And, and even if they're open back up, you still have the stigma. A lot of people are staying away. So it, it's, it's, uh, it's a tough thing right now. Uh, so we, we, we want to support our, our business owners. It's not just restaurants, it's any small business. Uh, if their, if their customer base has been impacted in any way, shape, or form, they're, they're hurting and they, they need help. They need assistance. Stay blue.
And also, a lot of people just, the fact that, you know, while they're trying to stay open, there is, there's that added expense.
Oh, yeah.
And you don't see that.
Your overhead, your overhead stays.
Cleaning and cleaning and sanitizing, and that's a tremendous expense for a small restaurant.
Well, the, the eligible expenses.
Do that and have less clientele. I mean, where they had 100% sitting in that restaurant before COVID, now they're lucky if they've got 50.
Yeah. The eligible expenses include lease or mortgage assistance.
Yep.
So some of these restaurants that may have foregone making some lease or mortgage payments just to try to stay alive, hoping for a better day, this is going to be able to help them with that. Operational expense assistance, which is exactly what you just mentioned. All of the splash shields and all of the, everything they've had to buy. And then unforeseen expenses as a result. So there's a lot of leeway there. These are the kind of things that the board will look at. It's been put together, the committee, I guess it's actually a committee, it's been put together to review these. But, uh, this is an exciting day. It really is. And I really, I, I, kudos to New Boston and Portsmouth for getting on this and starting the process. And Souda County coming on board and, and we're getting this done. And, uh, and, and we'll, we'll continue to push. We need to help our small business.
Yep.
Okay? All right. That comes the last item on the agenda. Questions? Gentlemen, man, gentlemen, man of the press.
I might ask, we have a lot of questions about the, uh, all the old abandoned service stations. And I know that's an intiring problem and not an easy one to solve. Uh, is that a fair question? Are you making some progress on that?
Again, it, it's a lamb bank question. The last I checked, there's, the one, they're waiting on the EPA for final approval. The other one, it is still stuck. they're waiting on the EPA for final approval. Uh, the other one, it is still stuck in probate court. It's all about bankruptcies and, and, um, family, family stuff. It's, it's really a tough thing. Some of these things have so many encumbrances on them. Uh, in this case, federal, federal liens, state liens, local liens, you name it, it's there. And it's, it's a legal nightmare. And they're, they're, they're wading through the weeds, trying to get it released, but it's, uh, they're, they're actively working on it. COVID has slowed us down quite a bit. Um, the city, I, you'll have to talk to Andy Gideon to see if they're working on any new ones or not. They may be dealing with the same thing we are on that.
Do you care to comment on the solid waste district? Any, any progress there? Set a meeting between the commissioners?
Yes, we, we, uh, we are hiring an enforcement officer. Uh, that has been put in the paper. It, it's out there. Um, and the San, there's a litter control job as well, um, that has been, matter of fact, I think it closes today as far as resumes are real close to that, um, for that job, and that'll be filled as well. Um, and we've started working on our solid waste plan. And as soon as we have those, uh, two positions filled, we'll be back up to full strength. So. The, now that the, the director's job, um, Stephanie is still filling that job, Ms. Helms is, is still in there. So, uh, it is, she is still the interim director.
Well, Stephanie will be, she's interim director, will be continuing on basically, or is that what you're saying?
She's continuing on with her work there, yeah. She's doing both jobs. She's doing the administrative job as well as the, uh, the director's job right now.
And she was there almost from the beginning, wasn't it, when they started?
Hmm, not the beginning, no. I think she'd been there about seventeen years.
Okay.
But I think the solid waste district started, what, thirty years ago?
I don't remember exactly what it was. I know Chuck, it seemed to me like Chuck Yanico, or he, or it might have been one other director before him. But Dan Palmer was in there. Well, shoot, he's been in there fifteen, sixteen years.
He, he started in oh-five.
Oh-five? Okay, well, he's been there as long as.
And then.
Up in commission. But Chuck Yanico was in there first part of the year, uh, two thousand five, 'cause I took office early January. And Chuck Yanico was still there, and then shortly after that, uh, sometime during two thousand five is when, uh, Dan Palmer took over.
So in the meantime.
There was one other, I think there was one other director before Chuck Yanico, and he was in there for some time, but I, it, it's been quite a while. But the way it's set up now, I think, you know, where it's funded by, uh, parcel fees, I think that took place, um, sometime after Dan Palmer got in there, they, they come up with a, uh, a policy, a new policy, and, and that was put together by a policy committee that, uh, they'd done the lesser of two evils. We was either stuck with whatever the EPA come up with, or what the policy committee came up with, and it would have been much more costly the way the EPA had set it. So we went with the policy committee.
That's all I have.
Okay. All righty.
From Andrea Line, what are the chances of getting a grant for some rural property?
Say it again.
What are the chances of getting a grant for some royal pro- rural property?
Rural property. Um, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't know exactly how to answer that question as it's posed. Um, it depends on who the, I, I, I don't know. I, i- it, it depends on who the corporation or, or entity is that's trying to get the property. Um, that, that's a tough one. I, I don't know how to answer that, given the context of what was asked.
Is that, what is that, is a business?
It doesn't say.
Yeah, that, that's all she has in her question, sorry.
Uh, it would be up to that entity to apply for grants. Um, I don't know of any grants that are available to buy property. Um, unless they're building something. If they're, they're building a community center or something like that, you can, you can sometimes lump that into the cost of the project. Um, need a little bit more detail on that question to really answer that.
From Patrick Keck, Portsmouth Day of the Times. Will businesses that applied for the City of Portsmouth or Village of New Boston grants also be able to apply for the county program?
No. Can't double dip.
Also, the ineligible businesses such as tobacco, vaping, and alcohol businesses listed are the same as Portsmouth guidelines. Are there concerns about the longevity of these kinds of businesses?
Are there concerns?
Yes, about their longevity.
Well, yeah, any, any business, there, there would be concerns about that, yes. But th- this is just criteria that we, we determined that we think would be the right criteria to use.
Uh, A- Andrea Line, uh, to specify to her question, for a project for kids.
Oh, okay, yeah, and I've been i- in contact with, with her. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, hear the name real well. Um, her concern is she's an advocate for children in our area. Uh, we've discussed, um, the children's, a children's home. Um, I've discussed with her about a, an intake center, a safety center, that's something we're working on. Um, are there grant monies to pay for those properties to build? Um, if it was a private entity, uh, getting grant monies right now to, to buy property to build on, um, with the, that would be like a capital budget request, something like that, it would be very hard to get right now. The capital budget itself is very, uh, huh, very much in jeopardy, uh, as written, and of course, they're dealing with that in, in Columbus. Um, what the, what we're working on is we are looking at, we are looking at houses, we are looking at, at buildings to do that in. We're actively doing that right now. Um, we, you know, we, we're getting some pressure on, you know, hurry, hurry, hurry. Well, you have to do it right, and you have to do it legal, legally right. And we're asking a lot of those questions right now. Um, you know, the higher vice code only allows you to do so much. And you also have to have the support of the state in regards to these things. If you go off on your own and you try to do things, trust me, there will be a million legal walls put up to prevent you from doing it, if you don't do it right. So, we're working on that. Um, in the meantime, you know, we're trying to work with Children's Services, and they're, they're doing it. They're putting up a lot of, uh, requirements on new placements, things like that, background checks, making sure that we don't have some of the repeats that we've had, um, actions that have happened here lately. But we're working on a, a safety intake center to, to make it to where the adults in the room have more time to find safe placement for these children. Um, you know, the children that are within the CPS system, um, is, is what we're working on right now. What is muddy are those children that are not currently in the system in one way or another. Um, and then you also have children that are in the juvenile system. Um, the law enforcement, the, the judicial side of it, that they're not part of Children's Services, but they've been somehow, you know, they've either spent time in juvenile detention, uh, more of, uh, someone who's ac- actively involved in Judge Lemon's court, um, that has gotten in trouble or things like that, that, uh, in some cases have very bad home lives. And those are, those are, those are difficult situations that the courts are dealing with. You, you, there's a, there's a line there of involvement and responsibility. So, and that doesn't mean that Judge Lemmons can't send one of those people to this place, you know? But at that point, it, it, it falls under the jurisdiction of Children's Services, possibly. These are the kind of legal things we're trying to figure out. Who is ultimately responsible for these children? These minors, in some cases, are teenagers. Uh, who's responsible for them when they're not in juvenile detention? Um, these, these are legal questions that have to be answered. And it's definitely in some areas that they are gray areas. They are not cut and dry, they are not black and white, they're, they're very gray. And we need rulings, we need opinions in order to do some of these things. Um, and we're working on that. Uh, we've, I've been in contact with Jason, talking about this quite a bit. Uh, we've talked to our prosecutor about this. And, uh, in some cases, you know, we're, we're very much in the infancy of trying to find answers on some of these things. We are, uh, going and, and working on actively looking for buildings. And some of those buildings have fallen through. We've tried. I mean, there's some entities that aren't willing to sell. So, you can't force someone to do that. You, you can't force anyone to do anything as far as, you know, selling property or leasing property or whatever. So we're working on it. It's gonna take some time. I know everybody wants everyone to move urgently, and trust me, if we could, we'd do it tomorrow. We would. Uh, but there is a process that must be followed. And, uh, and, and we'll do that until we, we get to the, to where we need to be. And we're hoping to do that soon. We really are.
One more long agenda if you wanna comment. Just heard yesterday there is a traffic roundabout being planned in Port Tannen.
Mm-hmm.
Run Lyra and Dogwood Ridge.
Yes.
Does this mean we're in danger of becoming a big city now?
Maybe Willersburg is. I don't, I don't know. The, uh, I know where that's at. That's at the split of Dogwood Ridge, and wow, I don't even know how to even visualize that because of the elevation change there. You've got Lick Run Lyra that goes, shoots off that way, and Dogwood Ridge keeps on going, and you know where that's at, if anybody that's driven that. And to even visualize what that's gonna look like, um, yeah, I have no idea, but yeah, that's something that they're, they're, they're actively working on, have been for some time now. So.
Just heard that was in the works, and, uh, I wonder how many people will have trouble getting on and getting off.
Oh, boy. I tell you what, it's hard to, it's hard to come off of Lick Run Lyra. If you've ever, it's, it's definitely a blind spot, and if, I always, I always let everybody else do what they wanna do. I do, I say, just go. I'd, I, I'll sit here, I'll be patient. Guy behind me's probably honking, not, you know, not happy with me. But that scares me to death. That, that intersection, there's been quite a few wrecks there. And, uh, hopefully this roundabout will help. I've, I've, I've watched Lawrence County and their struggles with their roundabout and what's happened there. At the Point Industrial Park, they have one, and I know that there was great consternation there from the local. Some love it, some hate it. Um, we'll see what happens. Um, but yeah, I don't know.
Just drive carefully, make sure your insurance is paid up.
There you go. I mean, there's even, there was even talk, and I'll just add this, and I don't, I don't think this is the case anymore, but at one time, they was talking about a roundabout coming right off the Grant Bridge. You know, I mean, that was a discussion, and I don't think they're doing that now, but at one time, please, press, don't put the, Brian Davis said, we're building a roundabout at the Grant Bridge. But at one time, that was one of the things that they looked at, was a possible roundabout there. And, uh, I don't think that's the case anymore. But, uh, that was a engineering possibility, let's put it that way. So.
I thought that was a good question to end, end the meeting on.
It is, and, and, and it's a good question for County Engineer Darren LeBrun.
It is.
He could tell you all about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Brian, do you have anything else?
From Betty Smith, I know it has not been talked about lately. Any updates on Shawnee Project, referring to golf course?
Um, nothing's changed since the last update I gave, which, I guess it has been about thirty days since I gave one. Uh, we haven't heard anything new from the state since then.
Where, where do the costs of building a children's home come from? Referring to projected costs as stated in previous meetings.
Well, that's, that's, oh, where do they, where do the numbers come from, or the cost of building? Or?
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
It's from Ro- Rose Maury.
Okay. The, the, I, the costs are from talking to other entities that have built similar-sized buildings. Um, operational cost, uh, I believe we talked about eleven million dollar facility, three million dollar operating cost per year to run a facility like that, um, if we were to do a full-blown children's home. Um, that's why right now, you know, and that is something that the county would not be able to do. I mean, you're talking about eleven million dollars, that, when we built the jail, Mike, how much was it for the jail?
Uh, I don't remember what the numbers were on it.
But it was up there.
But the state paid.
Exactly.
The, the state furnished a lot of money for that.
And then we still have a bond. We're still paying on a bond for the balance of that. So, uh, we would have to do the same thing here in Souda County. If we were to entertain building one, we would have to go to the taxpayers and pass a bond for that, uh, pass a levy, I'm sorry, to pay for that. And you're talking about a, a significant increase in property taxes for each person. Um, what we're trying to do right now is for.
One other thing too, Brian. Uh, I don't think there's any money available for something like a children's home at this point.
No, there's not.
There's no longer any money for jails, like, we got a huge amount.
Exactly.
To help build the jail, but not to operate the jail.
Right. A- and that's the problem here. We would not get any assistance, and the state does not support a, a children's home. They don't, they don't. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do, um, somewhere in between. We're, we're trying to create a, a safety intake center where the children are brought in. It gives everybody time to find proper placement. It gives the courts time to, to take care. It takes time, or it gives the courts time to figure out what's happened, okay? In some cases, it's brand new and it's fresh. It also gives the mental health, physical health professionals time to evaluate, evaluate the child and to determine the needs of the child. There's a buffer time there. This is something that was identified early on. Children's Services, uh, when, when Jason came to us, he, he had, he, he brought this up. We had talked about it prior to that even. Um, that this was something that we really needed to do. And, but until Lowell came in and things changed in Children's Services, the environment wasn't there to really do it. That was the problem. And now we have people that are cooperating and talking and willing to work, uh, hand-in-hand with the commissioners to make this happen. There's definitely been an environment change there. So, um, everyone's excited about this. Jason called me just the other day with another house that he thought, that, at large, a very large house that he thought might work, that he wants to try to set up a time to go see. So, um, we have a lot of volunteers there coming out of the woodwork, talking like, hey, I wanna help, whatever I can do. And, uh, so we're not worried about that. We've even got contractors that have came and said, hey, look, any remodeling, anything that's gonna be done, you supply the materials, we'll do the work. That's the kind of community we live in. We knew those people were out there, 'cause we heard it already, Kathy and Mike. We, these people were already telling us, you know, we'll do whatever it takes. And that's the community we live in. We've got caring, loving individuals that are willing to do whatever it takes to help our children. We have to create the mechanism for them to do it, and that's what we're working on. Okay?
From Sin Mackley. I'm curious as to why tattoo businesses are in, included. I understand the concerns for exploitation with sexually oriented businesses and substance abuse with tobacco and alcohol, but what are the concerns with tattoo businesses?
I don't, I, to be honest with you, on this particular part, we took, we, we actually determined this through recommendations. This isn't something that, I didn't really give any put on this as far as the ineligibility of these particular stores. So, Robert? So that's more of a requirement? There, yeah. There were certain criteria that were set forth that the CARES Act itself said you cannot do this. Okay, and, and still be eligible. So, these weren't necessarily our requirements. So, I hope that answers the question. Maybe, uh, Sin can go back and dig a little further at the state or federal level even. It's more of a federal, yeah. Anything else, Robert?
A- Andrea Line and, and Rose Maury, uh.
I think it's Lynn.
Lynn?
I think it's Lynn, yeah. I'm not, I'm not ever so sure, but.
I, I apologize if it is. Um, they, they're continuing the conversation. I- i- it's just difficult to keep up with, to me. I, I apologize. Um, wh- what about the homes that the city wants to get rid, rid of? Can we clean them up? From Andrea? And then Rose also, uh, would it help for the public to get a petition to send to the state?
Okay, two things. One is about the homes.
Yes.
I'm not exactly sure what the city's wanting to tear down. Um, I, I know that there's a lot of blighted. I, I know that there's a lot of blighted houses, um, that are beyond repair, there's probably several that aren't beyond repair, but we do not have the funding for that in the land bank. Do I?
Asbestos probably would be a big-
Oh, yeah. You, 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 you do have, in a lot of the homes, several have been condemned, that's something that Portsmouth City, um, the Health Department would have to consider, um, but could some of those houses be rehabbed? Possibly. Some you wouldn't want individuals to live in ever again, because they're way beyond that. That's the kind of, we are looking at houses that are empty right now, we're doing that. But we also have to have a sizable house, I mean, it needs to be decent, and it also has to be able to be within code, um, be able to brought up, be brought up to a certain code, so, um, definitely, yeah, we're, we're looking at all of those potentials. The second question was-
Petition from the public.
What, what needs to be done is if more funding for children, um, is, is desired, which I believe it is by everybody, you need to send letters to your elected officials, um, our state rep, our state senator, because I can tell you, they can do a lot of lobbying on their own, but it is powerful whenever they can go to their, their fellow, um, representatives and senators and say, look at all these letters, look at all these letters, we need to do something, I'm getting bombarded with requests. That is powerful, and the problem is, not enough people are doing that. We've been doing it, we, we, we speak about it, and we talk about it with others in the community, but if they really want to see an increase in, in, in funding, if they want to see a change to kinship, if they want to see a change to, to, uh, you know, the, where, where reunification, they need to be vocal about that, where the changes can be made, and the changes are made at the state level. Phone numbers are in print, email addresses are in print, that's where that fight starts. We, as, as I stated last week, we are creatures of statute, we operate under the higher vice code, the Children's Services Board operates under the higher vice code, Job and Family Services operates under the higher vice code, the law changes, the funding, all of that is in Columbus, and, um, and, and don't stop, don't stop with just our representatives and senators, call the majority whip, call, call the, the, you know, this, the, uh, State House as far as the, uh, the Speaker of the House Representatives, call their office, call the, the Senate President, call them and leave messages and say, listen, we need to address this, get your neighbors to do that, that's, that's what our constitutional republic is all about, we the people, they need to be heard, that, there's only three voices right here, we need more voices.
That is something that Rose could do.
And Rose can do it, yes, and she's very capable of doing it, I know she is, because she's, she's good at that kind of thing, and that's really where that fight starts. It, 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 the attempt, the effort starts in Columbus, and, uh, we just need more voices, we really do.
From Andrea, can't we begin a fund here now? Will you start an account?
Um, I, I, we're, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how to even answer that question. Anybody's able to do whatever they want to, if they want to start raising money now to do that, um, and that's fine, that would be fine. That would be a way for everybody to be able to contribute, not just property owners, that would be a way to do it.
That could get very with-
Legally, it could get very messy, yes.
I see a, a, an opening for scam artists to come in and say they're collecting money, so-
Yeah.
That's a good idea, but I think we need to maybe just hold on that for-
Well, you got to remember that getting a house or getting a building to use is one thing, but getting a perpetual revenue stream for something that, you know, you, you can create something, but how are you going to fund that year after year after year, and how are you going to pay the employees and healthcare and all the benefits that you have to pay the employees that are going to be there? You know, anybody starting a new business knows that if you, if you have ten employees, and they've all got a family, you've got to pay something to the tune of about thirty thousand dollars a year per employee, and that usually comes out upfront, so that's like three hundred thousand dollars for thirty, or ten employees that you have to pay before you ever pay them the first dime of wages. On top of that, you got unemployment, you got workers' comp, you got a lot of things you have to do, and, and, and you've also got to have money to pay for the maintenance and the util, uh, the utilities and stuff for the building. So, there's a whole lot of things to consider, it's, it's not like throwing a bunch of money in a bucket and building a building, and then you've solved the problem, you know? You're not going to be able to count on, uh, you know, volunteer workers to operate that entirely. It's, it's going to have to be something that once you've got that started, you've got to be prepared to make that run forever. I mean, you know, this problem's not going to ever go away, and it's something that we've got to take care of, but we've got to make sure that we don't just create something, walk away from it, and then it just fizzles out. So, that's, that's the issue that people's got to look at, there's a whole lot more to consider than just, can we throw some money in a bucket and, and get something built?
The legalities also, collecting money, the legalities.
Yeah, the legalities is the big part, and we, we have, we have to do this right. If, if you go and you just start, you know, asking for money, there, there are huge legalities between public and private funds, you, you, you know, this is definitely going to be a public-private partnership, I can tell you that it cannot be one hundred percent public, it can't be, um, the funding is not there. But there will be a need for the perpetual cost that Mike mentioned, for the, the private sector to definitely kick in and help with this. So, we appreciate her-
That's a great idea.
Desire, it is, that is something that will come, it will come. But it has, we have to set the foundation of this thing right. If we don't get this right, we will, we will struggle through the whole process if we don't get the foundation right on this thing, and we have to take it, we have to take it slow, because if we rush into this, we could actually waste money trying to get it set up, and that's not something we're, we're able to do or willing to do, we need to legally get it done right. And it's not as simple as saying, well, let's build it and let's just do it. No, y- you have to go through the process, and it is a legal process to create this entity, and, uh, we're working on it.
This, this might be something we do after we get it, the building.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, we'll talk about this, it's, it's a good idea, but-
Ju- just to get the building up to code is going to take money, and that is going to be an opportunity for the public to really participate in that. Uh, like I said, we have contractors that are willing to help, we will reach out at that point, and we'll reach out to even more people that are willing to help to provide the labor to do these things, but until we get there, we, we have, we have to, and I've been saying this from the beginning, we have to identify the actual building that we're going to do this in, and then we have to create the legal framework by which we're going to operate under before we can do that. We, we, there's just a right way to do it and a wrong way, and we're going to do this right.
It's very exciting, just one contractor-
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Mike and I had dinner, uh, with a contractor last week, who has forty-one employees, he's willing to, um, use at no charge to get, you know, to, to do whatever they need to do to get this building up, so that, that, that's just one contractor, so, it's very exciting.
Yeah, definitely. So, all right, Brian, anything else? Okay, we get a motion to adjourn?
If there are no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Thank you.